Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 2018 Board of Education meeting. I'd ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, Linda, could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Lavette?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you so much. Okay, item four is our student board reps. Could we start with Lyman Hall and Samuel? Welcome. How are you tonight?
How are you?
Excellent, thank you.
All right, so at Lyman Hall, our winter sports have just ended and spring sports are in full swing. Preseason games are beginning this week and regular season games for most teams are starting next week. Our indoor track team, who is here with us tonight, went to Nationals for the Sprint Medley Relay, which had RJ Otten, Jordan Crawford, Randy McFarland, and Blake Jandrew. And they qualified for Nationals in December and traveled to New York a couple of weeks ago to compete for the Nationals title and placed seventh overall in the country.
Wow.
And the track, the track coach, Mr. Palmer, was recognized as the SEC Voice Indoor Track Coach of the Year. So on behalf of Lyman Hall students, we'd like to congratulate him on his season and on that award. And in other news, on February 26, we had our Student Board meeting here at Town Hall with members of the board along with students from both Lyman Hall and Sheehan. In light of this, we had several meaningful ways to put together a symbolic walkout at Lyman Hall on March 14. Activities for students to participate in included a meditation, a peer-to-peer discussion center, as well as a gathering out in our senior court. Last month, our sophomores attended the Credit for Life there at the Wallingford Parks and Rec, which was a huge, which was a huge success. This event is great because almost every, or almost the entire sophomore class every year goes and learns kind of how to be independent in the working world and whatnot. And in addition to this, last month, our senior class and student council also hosted our Spring Formal at Lyman Hall, which was a fun event for all to attend. And also last month, our DECA chapter competed at the State Conference, which was a lot of fun. And four of our DECA members placed at the conference and will be attending the National Conference in just four weeks in Atlanta, Georgia. Being a part of this group, we're all very excited to showcase our skills and hopefully take home a national trophy in Atlanta. In other news, our CAS High School Arts Award banquet is on April 3. And we will be congratulating artists Holly Ann Lau and Nicole Wedeman on their artistic achievements. And on April 10, we'll have our Summer Fair, our Summer Job Fair at the Hubcap in Wallingford. And our play, Sister Act, this year will be showcased in May. So I look forward to giving you information on that next month. And our Connecticut School-Based SAT for juniors was rescheduled from March 21 and has been moved to April 24. And during the SAT on that day, juniors will be taking the test and there will be a College and Career Fair and presentation by David Flood for freshmen and sophomores. Also, on behalf of the Lyman Hall student body, we'd like to thank the retirees that are here today. And we want to thank them for their service and dedication to us students. And I look forward to seeing you guys next month. Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Perfect. As always, a lot going on at Lyman Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, from Mark T. Sheehan, Rajan. Welcome, Rajan. How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you. On March 1, our freshman students had their course selection assembly. On the 6th, we had our distracted driving assembly. On the 7th, we had our military fair and lunch waves, where students were able to meet with representatives from the military. On the 9th, we had our blood drive. In athletics, our winter sports were wrapped up on the 20th with our Winter Sports Awards Night, where we recognized our all-student and all-league athletes and our scholar athletes, as well as two of our coaches, who won Coach of the Year, Mr. Mike Basio and Mr. Dave Festa. Spring sports are now underway, with practices beginning on the March 11. Going on into April, we have several games against Lyman Hall. On the 2nd, we have our lacrosse game, 3rd, the baseball games, and the 18 softball game. Beginning on the 8th, we will have our National Library Week. April 9 begins our National Assistant Principals Week. The 10th is the Summer Job Fair at the Hubcap. Spring break is from the 16th through the 20th. Our School Day SAT for juniors will be on the 24th. There will also be other activities run by our National Honor Society for our freshmen. And the makeup date is the 25th. The 25th is also our AP Pre-Registration Meeting. And the 26th is our International Night. Next month, I will present with information about our April events, as well as information about our May events. Thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thanks, Rajan. I like Lyman Hall, lots going on at Sheehan. Great. Item 5, Presentation and Awards. Dr. Menzo.
Yes, for those watching and those in the audience, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month. So this is an opportunity for superintendent school districts to recognize the hard work that our board members put in each and every year during their service with the Board of Education and with the town of Wallingford. Many of you might not know, but the average time that a board member puts in each week is many hours more than just the televised meeting. There are events that need to be covered, the board is, is present to recognize students and staff. There's also additional meetings that occur based on budget or other matters. So the volunteer work that these individuals do is incredible in terms of the countless hours that they're not only formally involved with the Board of Education, but informally being at events, as well as just being a community member and listening to concerns, questions from the public. So I just want to say thank you to all of you. And my standing tradition, which I started now nine years ago, is that we provide a book to school libraries in the honor and the name of board members. And what we do is we try to look at books that are requested, and then I kind of look at, okay, how do we match them up with board members, either personalities, backgrounds, you know, whatever it may be, interests, quirks, Mr. Votto, other things like that that we look at. And I have to say, it is always a very fun opportunity. This year, I engaged Central Office in the conversation. So don't worry, Ms. Lavavlette was there, so she was nice. She has to be, because she's personal. But the thing is...
So you mean the rest weren't nice? Is that what you're insinuating?
No, 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 no.
I have your backs, everybody.
She kept, she kept us focused. So first, I'm just gonna go in the order I have here. This will be going to the Moses Y. Beach Library, and it's in the honor of Ms. Corso, Ms. Erin Corso. And it's called "I Can Be Anything, Don't Tell Me I Can't." And it's actually a great book, because Ms. Corso is a counselor. And it talks about just the dreams, the aspirations that, you know, students, that we want to have in all students, and as a counselor in another district, but also as the mother of several children. I know she encourages her children to really reach for the stars. And it's a great, it's really well-written, and I'll get this, too. I'll come around and pass those out. The next book is in honor of Ms. Costelli, Kathy Costelli. And this is going to go into the Highland Library. And it's a beautiful book. It's called "The Snow Rabbit." And actually, there are no words in the book. It's all, the story is told through pictures.
Oh, because I can't read.
No, no. Oh, my goodness, gracious. It's about imagination and kindness. The book is all about kindness. There's this girl who befriends another girl who's handicapped and in a wheelchair. And they have this magical story that they create about building or developing a rabbit, a rabbit in the snow. And it's not a, it just comes to life. And it's a beautiful story. So no, it's not about literacy. The next book, Mr. Reynolds unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. He had some, a personal event that he had to attend to out of state. But there's two books, and they're both in honor of Frank Lloyd Wright. But the first book, and the reason why I picked this one in particular for Mr. Reynolds, is that it deals with the science behind all of his architecture and the mathematics. And, you know, we all know that he's a, he is a professor and was a teacher of, of science in New Britain, and now a professor at a community college. So that, again, resonated with us for that. And the other Frank Lloyd Wright has to go to our artist on the Board of Education, which would be Mr. Ray Ross. So this book is more about his artistic impressions and his interpretation of art. And I thought that was well-fitting for Mr. Ross. So that book is going to, those two books are going to the Parker Farms Library. So just wanted to let you know. Then, for Ms. Purcell, this book is going to Cook Hill, and it's called "I Am Peace: A Book of Mindfulness." And as the wellness person on the board, this was so fitting for you in that role. So this, again, will go to the Cook Hill Library. Pond Hill, this book cracks me up. I started actually reading it. It's called "The Perfect Score," and it's for Roxanne. And basically, it's going to Pond Hills Library. And basically, it's about, and the many topics, the discussions we have about assessment. And it's really talking about the fact that standardized tests really don't measure everything. And you could just, from the picture of the book, it's a bunch of bubble sheets. And let's just say the students had a very creative way of addressing or attacking the state assessment as a classroom of students. So I thought that was fitting, because I know we've had many conversations as a board about the value of standardized testing versus looking at other measures. And this could be really given to pretty much all of the board members, especially the veteran ones who've had the conversation along the way. So, but I thought that was fitting. Guess who this is for? No, 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 actually, it could go, they're pointing at each other. I gave this, actually, Karen, it's not because of the title in a negative way, but it's a strong one. I dissent Ruth Leder Ginsberg. And it's very strong, and it just shows that, you know, Karen, if you know Ms. Lavette, she's a person who speaks up, and she speaks up for everyone. She speaks up for everyone, and she makes sure, in a positive way, in a proactive way, that she's heard. And this book is really well-done. This will be going to, excuse me, this will be going to the Fritz Library. It's really well-written. I think you'll like it if you get a chance to just take a look at it. As we continue to move along, Ms. Raccio, this is a series. It's the Cody series. And it's Cody and the Mysteries of the Universe. And basically, Cody is the main character, and Cody basically understands there's a lot of things to investigate. And Cody investigates everything to the fullest extent. So I thought that was also somewhat fitting in terms of your job as an, you know, as an auditor, and then also in your love and your passion for making sure that, you know, everything is, is doing, we follow the rules and in the best interest of all. Last, but certainly not least, is the book called "I Finally," or "I Won," "The War I Finally Won." And this is from Mr. Votto. It's historical fiction, of course. And there's an interesting part here. It says, and I read this, and I said, oh, this is Mike, "shows us that real freedom is not just the ability to choose, but the courage to make the right choice." And I think that, you know, Mike and I have had a relationship for nine years, and he's always about, whenever we talk on the phone, it's, again, it's about what's, nothing is always, what is right isn't always easy, and what is easy isn't always right. And that resonated with me when I read that. So I thought this was very fitting for you, and your love of history being the middle school social studies teacher. So I thought that was very fitting. So again, I'll pass these out, if you don't mind, for you to take a look at. And I hope you...
Thank you for taking the time to really delve into that. He does it every year. It's, it's a, it's all good. Thank you. It's the dissented book. Thank you, Dr. Menzo, and thank you for the time you spend to making these connections. And obviously, I would imagine as all board members, the notion of books being provided to a library is always a really positive and a great thing. So great tradition, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
No worries. If we could now move to the next presentation?
Yep, please.
And actually, Sam kind of stole my thunder over here. But Sam kind of gave you a little precursor into who we're recognizing this evening. And we have actually a special additional recognition, because we were just informed today that Mr. Palmer, the coach of the team, was the SEC Coach of the Year. So we're very, very pleased for that. So congratulations, Mr. Palmer. And if you want, don't mind coming up, that'd be great. We have students with us this evening, as you heard earlier, getting recognized for their recent accomplishments. And I would ask if you don't, you could come on up, join us. If you can just share a little bit about their accomplishments?
This season was great for Lyman Hall. Can't laugh. We broke six school records this year. It was basically, right now, we have five kids. I want to say there's about 35 kids on the whole team that were varsity, contributing each meet. They worked hard every day. Thank you guys for the track that you guys just put in, because we were out there in five-degree weather, six-degree weather running every day. And these gentlemen did things that haven't been done in 20 years at Lyman Hall. I look back into history, we've never been SEC East Champions, we've never been second in the SEC, and we were second in the state in Class M. They were all New England, they were all, went to Nationals, competed there. So these guys broke the four-by-two, uh, four-by-four record, Sprint Medley Relay, 300, 1600, 30, 200-meter record. And the girls broke the four-by-two record, so it wasn't just the gentlemen. So it was a great season for both boys and girls. And we have five guys here tonight that did something above and beyond the average athlete. So these guys really accomplished a lot for Lyman Hall this year and a lot for their town. So it was great to coach you guys, and it's going to be even better to see what you guys do in the future, so. Jordan Crawford. Randy McFarland. Blake Jandrew. Matt Nisafaro. RJ Otten.
Right. So just, again, congratulations, guys. The coach was keeping me posted along the way. And I think I sent some of you guys notes, so of good wishes. And so we were definitely thinking of you while you were, you were representing Wallingford. And thank you so much, because it takes a lot of training. And I don't think, you know, there's a lot of sports that get a lot of recognition, a lot of high publicity. And sometimes, in terms of what you do, in terms of running, your track and everything, is not always necessarily as high-profile. And I'm glad that we were fortunate enough to have you guys and only accomplish what you did, but also have an opportunity to honor you and also pay tribute to your whole team. Because it does, you guys were, were obviously part of an amazing accomplishment, but it takes a whole team. So congratulations. We truly appreciate your hard work. We wish you the best as you continue to move forward. And again, thank you for representing Lyman Hall and Wallingford Public Schools as well as you did. Okay, would you like to come?
Sure, just same, same sentiment. Congratulations, really. It's a fantastic tribute to you guys. And I want to say thank you on behalf of the Board of Ed for representing our community and Lyman Hall in such a mature, articulate, well, not articulate, you just run, but in a stellar fashion, in terms of, you know, people don't know what's Wallingford, what's Lyman Hall. So you guys are the face of Lyman Hall when you represent us, when you're going out of state like that. So thank you. Thank you so much for representing us in such a stellar fashion. And I also want to say thank you to your families, because things don't happen in a vacuum. Your mom and dad and whoever else in your family are cheering you on and encouraging you to do some really interesting and cool things. So thanks to your family for supporting you so that you can go out and do what you do so well. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. And congratulations again to you all. All right. I was just gonna mention at this time, and I know that we have an agenda item, if you, could we flip-flop an agenda item? Okay.
Okay, we, is, are there any questions from the public at this time? Okay, I'm gonna assume none. So with that, if we can get a motion to go into executive session for items E1, Discussion of Acceptance of Retirements, E2, Discussion of Acceptance of Leave of Absence, and E3, Discussion of Candidate for High School Coaching Position?
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. I'm not sure who they were, but that's all good. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries for an executive session. Do you want us to leave? Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Can I, I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries, and we're out of executive session. I am going to move one agenda item out of order. Item 12, Instructional Committee. I'm gonna move that up front now. So I will now turn it over to Mrs. Corso.
Thank you.
No problem.
We're gonna skip ahead to 12.5, the Approval of Acceptance of Retirements. Starting with, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Jane Amenta, effective June 30, 2018.
I second it.
Jane has been a vocational agriculture teacher since March of 1985, for a total of 33 and 1/2 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools. A discussion?
Good evening, everyone. Jane cannot be here with us tonight, but I just wanted to say a few words. So Jane, more than most, means a lot to the community of Wallingford. You've seen her flowers and her plants throughout the community at different events. She has organized our students to provide flowers for weddings and different parties and celebrations, and provided beautiful arrangements for all of our events at Lyman Hall and Central Office as well. So Jane has done a tremendous job building what has become a beautiful plant-science program, in our agricultural science program, and she will be sorely, sorely missed. Jane has done a wonderful job. Her students love her. The faculty at Lyman Hall will miss her dearly. And the community of Wallingford will miss the beautiful creations that she's kind of instructed our students on how to, on how to put together. So Jane will be missed.
Thank you.
So I would just like to echo the sentiment of Mr. Corso. I've known Jane, I was thinking about it, I've been getting my Christmas centerpiece from my dining room table from the plant-science program for at least the last 10 years. And Jane is just amazing, because she likes those special orders, because it's an opportunity for her students to go through that process of, you know, taking the order and what's your, you as the customer, what's your specifications, what are you interested in, size, width, depth, colors, picking out ribbons. And it's just a, it's a whole process and an opportunity for students to experience not just the plain vanilla, the beautiful wreaths and poinsettias and all that, that do come out of the plant-science program, but the opportunity to do a custom-made, if you will. And Jane always welcomed me and welcomed my opportunities to do something creative and unique with her students. And I always saw her interacting so amazingly positive with all her students and keeping them focused and just, just running a program that I can't even imagine, all the details and all the pieces to make it look as seamless as she makes it. And she does make it look seamless. And I, when I read that she's retiring, I had two thoughts. One, good for her, after 33 and 1/2 years, she's probably pretty tired. But sad for us, because it is a tremendous loss for our program. And I know she will be sorely missed. And I will personally miss seeing her every Christmas, when I trudge in to get my plant order, my tabletop order. So Jane, I wish you the best. I hope you have a wonderful, relaxing, and good health through your retirement. You've certainly earned it. And thank you for your years of service to the Wallingford School System. You, again, will be sorely missed. Thank you.
And you will continue to see her. She's volunteered her time graciously.
Oh, really?
Help whoever the new hire will be, kind of...
That's awesome.
Make sure the program keeps running.
Yeah, she's, she's just amazing, the program she runs. So, thanks.
Thanks, Roxanne. Further discussion? I heard a second by Ms. Purcell. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Abstention, motion carries. I also make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the retirement of William Baxter, effective June 30, 2018. William Baxter has been a science teacher and an info tech, information technology resource teacher since September of 1982, for a total of 36 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion?
So I don't, I did not have the opportunity to see Bill instruct students, but I have watched him in talking with Mrs. Lavavlette earlier tonight, instruct adults. And he is very much the attention-to-detail individual. So when he was showing us how to do something in a computer, which is outside most of our levels of expertise, he took the time to explain why it was important and what the results were of our actions. So I would assume, and Mrs. Lavavlette knows him longer than me, but I would assume he had the same attention-to-detail, which is students, when he taught at Lyman Hall. Bill will be missed. He's been an intricate part of what we do at Lyman Hall on the very behind-the-scenes piece for our computers, our students, our scheduling. And he will be missed.
I'd like to add that Mr. Baxter, for me, has always shown tremendous patience. And again, if he shows patience with somebody who, technology is not my first language, I am not a native speaker, and I, I feel like he's willing to take the time to help somebody really understand what each action leads to, and what will be the most efficient way and practical way to create documents that will sort in a wide variety of ways. On a personnel level, he can do things, for example, he taught me to sort documents, and not simple Excel sorts, those, these go way beyond that, so that I can be sure with every bit of confidence that when I'm doing something as difficult as determining seniority lists that could have tremendous impact, that they're done and done right to all the various levels of teacher certifications. The patience he finds is just tremendous, and I'm really going to tremendously miss what he's offered in the personnel office. I know he's shown the same sort of patience in teaching us through a variety of different changes in grading programs over the years, too, back to IG Pro and ultimately to Power School, and make sure that scheduling and grades are shipped out in beautiful order every time. So he'll be missed.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify... and what will be the most efficient way and practical way to create documents that will sort in a wide variety of ways. On a personnel level, he can do things, for example, he taught me to sort documents, and not simple Excel sorts, these go way beyond that, so that I can be sure with every bit of confidence that when I'm doing something as difficult as determining seniority lists that could have tremendous impact, that they're done and done right to all the various levels of teacher certifications. The patience he finds is just tremendous and I'm really going to tremendously miss what he's offered in the Personnel Office. I know he's shown the same sort of patience in teaching us through a variety of different changes in grading programs over the years too, back to IG Pro and ultimately to Power School, and make sure that scheduling and grades are shipped out in beautiful order every time. So, he'll be missed.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Linda Binix effective June 30th, 2018. Linda Binix has been a middle school teacher since August 1993 for a total of 25 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Discussion, Mr. Snyder?
Good evening, everyone. So I have the distinct honor and privilege of speaking about this year's retirees from Dag Hammershald. There are 11 retirees total, four are from Dag Hammershald with Linda Binix. Mrs. Binix is here. Here, does she wanna? You have to come on. Okay, well. Mrs. Binix is retiring after 31 years of service. She began her teaching in Preston, Connecticut, where she was a PE teacher. After Preston, she started the hardest job ever, which was staying at home and raising her children for 14 years. During that time, she was active with the Wallingford Parks and Rec, teaching a variety of classes. And since then, the last 25 years have all been at Dag Hammershald, where she's taught math, ELA, reading, social studies. Linda plans on traveling, of course, but she's gonna be spending her time between her home in Vermont and the Connecticut shoreline. And in addition, she's gonna be spending lots of time with her wonderful grandchildren. So we wish Linda all the best.
Actually, Ms. Binix, you do need to come on. Just wanna give you this certificate. You have to get a picture. And I just wanna say thank you for everything also. It's been my pleasure to get to know you over the last nine years. We share a lot of love for middle school students, cooking, eating, all those great things. And I wish you all the best in your retirement and good health and much happiness. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Karen Brown effective June 30th, 2018. Karen Brown has been a business education teacher from 1983 to 1990, then an elementary teacher, and finally a librarian media specialist since 1996, for a total of 35 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion? Mr. Snyder?
So after 35 years, Mrs. Brown is retiring, all those years in Wallingford. She started her career as a business ed teacher at Sheehan. For seven years, she was a third grade teacher at Moses Y. Beach. She continued at Moses Y. for the next eight years as its Media Center Specialist. The last 13 have been at Dag Hammershald, where she's been the Media Center Specialist. She has known hundreds of students over the years and has helped them in so many ways. In 2014, she experienced a pretty major life event and is immensely grateful to her colleagues, the students and the entire Wallingford community who helped her through that. Karen will be spending time at her home in Rhode Island in addition to looking forward to some travel to Europe. Our Media Center will not be the same without Karen Brown. Congratulations, Karen.
And again, thank you so much for everything you do. Best of health and safe travels. And I just can't thank you enough because I know how many students have increased their love of reading because of your presence in their life. So thank you for everything.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Carol D. Dominisus effective June 30th, 2018.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion?
Ms. D. Dominicus is retiring after 35 years of teaching Family and Consumer Science. She started her teaching in New Jersey, taught in upstate New York for six years, spent 12 years and months in Massachusetts, and has been at Dag Hammershald for the last 16 years. She does have a trip to Ireland planned for this October and is looking forward to more traveling in the years to come. In between traveling, she will be spending more time gardening, sewing, and cooking, and we wish her all the best.
Thank you. She's not here. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the retirement of Renee Liu effective June 30th, 2018. Renee has been an interventionist since August 1992 for a total of 26 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion?
Renee began her career as an elementary teacher and then shifted to her specialty as an interventionist where she shared her talents, providing personalized instruction to students who grew into true readers under Renee's care. An excellent diagnostician, Mrs. Liu used data to ensure her students were achieving at the highest levels. Renee is an active contributor to the Moses Y. Beach community and is seen as a resource to her colleagues. Renee shares instructional strategies and her expertise, and teachers carry what they learn from her into their own classrooms. Students, families, and colleagues will all miss Renee's thoughtful and caring approach. She leaves behind a legacy that has touched generations. The Moses Y. Beach family wishes her well in her retirement and in all her future endeavors.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Victoria Zolkowitz-McKinnis effective June 30th, 2018. Victoria has been a pre-kindergarten language teacher and an elementary teacher since December 1980 for a total of 38 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mrs. Zolkowitz, I'm reading what Mrs. Victoria Reed wrote on behalf of Mrs. Zolkowitz-McKinnis. And the elementary conferences were switched as a result of a snow day to this evening. So that is why we are missing some of our elementary administrators and retirees because they are at work tonight and therefore unexpectedly and therefore couldn't be here on account of the snow cancellations. So, from Mrs. Reed. "Good evening, it is a pleasure to share a few thoughts about Ms. Victoria McKinnis, Highland School kindergarten teacher. I've had the pleasure of working with Vicki for many years. She has over 30 years' experience as a kindergarten teacher and continues to maintain an enthusiasm for teaching and learning that she shares with the students in her class on a daily basis. Victoria has the ability to develop positive relationships with people. She easily establishes rapport with students, staff members, parents, and other members of the community. She willingly shares her knowledge and expertise with colleagues and supports their efforts as they develop instructional strategies to support student learning. Victoria's classroom was a busy place. Students were active participants in their learning. Vicki used a variety of instructional strategies to meet the needs of diverse learners. Students in Mrs. McKinnis's classroom sang songs, danced, and learned about diverse cultures and customs. Every year, for example, Mrs. McKinnis led the Chinese New Year Parade through the halls of Highland School to the delight of all students and staff. She always made thoughtful, informed decisions based upon what she believed to be in the best interests of children. Students in Mrs. McKinnis's classroom were motivated to succeed under her steady guidance. Vicki will be missed at Highland School. She's a child advocate who never loses sight of the fact that children are the most important members of the school community. Vicki earned the respect of both parents and staff members due to her commitment to helping children learn, grow, and become productive members of a diverse society. Congratulations are extended to Vicki on her retirement. As she moves forward in this stage of her life, I'm confident it will be time well spent, traveling, visiting family and friends, and doing a variety of things there never was time to do while teaching. Enjoy, you've earned it, congratulations again. Respectfully, Victoria Reed, Principal."
Thank you, Cindy. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Deborah Poach effective June 30th, 2018. Deborah Poach has been a school nurse since January 1991 for a total of 26.5 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second that motion.
Thank you, discussion?
Good evening. I am pleased to have the opportunity tonight to speak on behalf of Deb Poach for its elementary school nurse. Nursing is in Deb's genes. She comes from a family of nurses. Her mom is an RN, and so is her sister. During her career, Deb worked at Gaylord Hospital on a respiratory floor. Later, she worked as a school nurse in Meriden at a Catholic high school. From there, she accepted a position at Moran Middle School in Wallingford. And when the Yalesville nurse position became available, she transferred. Deb has been a school nurse in Wallingford for 26-plus years. For many years while working as a school nurse, Deb also moonlighted as an emergency department nurse in Midstate Hospital in Meriden. Deb would close up the school office at 3:45 and be on the floor for the night shift in Midstate by 4:00 PM. Over the past two years, I've had, that I've worked with Deb, I have found her to be highly competent and professional. Her calm and caring demeanor provides both students and staff with confidence and comfort during distressing situations. Deb helps all her patients to feel better and important no matter how large or small their need is. Deb has had varied roles in Wallingford as a school nurse. Not only has she, is she, a registered school nurse, Deb is fully accredited as well. Deb has been an active member of many committees, including representing her colleagues as a union rep and negotiations member. She also trained student nurses each year from Southern Connecticut State University in community health nursing and coordinated the biannual health fair at Sheehan High School for many years. At Fritz School, Deb heads up the emergency response team and coordinates the tools for school annual survey and conducts a walkthrough with staff and parents. Last year, I had the pleasure of attending the award banquet that honored Deb for being selected as the School Nurse of the Year by the National Association of School Nurses. The staff and students at Fritz Elementary School will miss Deb's comforting supports that we have come to expect. However, we hope that Deb will enjoy her days of retirement with her husband, who is retired, her two sons and their families, which include four grandchildren. Best wishes, Deb, for a healthy, happy retirement."
Again, Deb, as we've said and it's all been said, first of all, you know, representing our school district last year as the Nurse of the Year was a great honor and I was so privileged to be there also at that ceremony. But what you do as a school nurse, I think that that job has probably changed definitely throughout your 26 and a half years, 50 times over. The amount of effort that a nurse has to put into making certain that all of the medications are taken care of, all the precautions for allergies, making sure constant communication with families is going on, it's just daunting. And I'm just amazed at the work that you've done and the work with your colleagues, working with them on professional development, working with Kathy Nealon as nursing coordinator. It's just a tribute to you as a person, your commitment to your profession, and the commitment to our students. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
It is, I'd like to add, 16 years ago when we decided we wanted to do a Wallingford Health and Fitness Fair, and we really didn't know where to go, Deb was one of the very first people to step up and organize the school nurses to do a booth. And she's done every single fair since then, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Ed accept with regret the retirement of Peter Seroyce effective June 30th, 2018. Mr. Seroyce has been an industrial arts technology education teacher since August 1988 for a total of 30 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion?
So Mr. Seroyce is actually retiring after teaching for 35 years. Prior to Wallingford, Mr. Seroyce taught at Cromwell High School for five years and the remaining 30 have been at Dag Hammershald. Mr. Seroyce told me weeks ago that retirement will allow him to shift his attention to other passions of serving others. Peter's involved with ministry programs where he works in prisons as well as homeless shelters and nursing homes. His desire to serve others will allow him to stay busy and refocus a different sense of purpose outside of the classroom. We wish him luck.
Thank you, further discussion? I just wanna add, I think I still have a stool that I made in his class back in seventh grade, so it held up all these years. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Deborah Trelowitz effective June 30th, 2018. Ms. Trelowitz has been a social worker since August 1998 for a total of 20 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
Mrs. Trelowitz brings a depth of wisdom to her role as a social worker that is unmatched. She understands children in a way that demonstrates a genuine love for supporting and nurturing future generations, a charge that she holds dear. Beloved by teachers, parents, and students, she goes above and beyond for each student she works with. Deb Trelowitz advocates her families tirelessly and works to support them at all costs, whether that means driving to their homes or connecting them to resources within the community at large. Deb has developed relationships across generations. She maintains strong ties to those that she has supported and has enjoyed the privilege of watching the fruits of her labor realized. On behalf of the Moses Y. Beach family, Deborah will be sorely missed. While she moves on, her career will leave a lasting impact on the entire Moses Y. Beach school community for years to come.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Sharon Rosick effective June 30th, 2018. Sharon was a Spanish teacher from August 2007 through June 2010, and then from August 2011 for a total of 10 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion?
All of Sharon's time with us was short. She is someone who always brought a smile to everyone's face, always had a good-hearted joke and was extremely compassionate with the students in her classroom. The World Language Department will sorely miss her upbeat personality, always excited to show up for work, and just had the ability to really affect a positive change on both the department and her student body, so she will be missed.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And last but not least, he wins the award for total years of service. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Steve Munsey effective June 30th, 2018. Mr. Munsey has been a history, social studies teacher since September 1978 for a total of 40 years of service in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion?
So I think, I think his record speaks for itself. So 40 years of service in public education is a lot of time to spend giving back to the students of this community. He has dedicated his life, the better part of his life, to supporting students that have come through Lyman Hall and has reached a point in his career that many of us will never get to where we've had students of students that we've had. So he's been able to see generations of families move through Lyman Hall and has the ability to impact those families greatly. So anyone who has put in that much time towards anything, and I think most of us in our careers can't identify too many people, it's kinda the families at the wedding when they start clapping for anyone who's been married 35 years. Those folks are dwindling. So to have someone spend and dedicate that much time to one building is just tremendous. So we thank Mr. Munsey for his time and dedication to Lyman Hall.
Thank you, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will move forward to Acceptance of Leave, 12.6 on our agenda. I make a motion that a Leave of Absence for Steve Munsey be approved without pay and in accordance with a provision of the current teacher's contract from May 22nd, 2018 through May 23rd, 2018.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, and I also make a motion that a Leave of Absence for Cindy Frank be approved without pay and in accordance with a provision of the current teacher's contract. from May 29th, 2018 through June 22nd, 2018.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. And twelve point seven, approval of acceptance of candidate to high school coaching positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the appointment of the following candidate to coaching positions. Boys and girls cross-country at Mark T. Sheehan High School, Mr. Frank Moore.
Second it.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Okay. Now we'll go back to twelve point one. We're going to stay in instructional committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to twelve point one, our mastery-based learning update. This is Latour.
So I do not have an update this evening. Our last meeting was canceled. So we'll resume with our level meetings in April.
Thank you. How about a presentation of proposed adoption of revised regulation, the graduation requirements slash standards of mastery?
So this is a second read of the revision to the regulation.
I have a discussion item on that.
Yes.
Page three of that, item two.
Credits earned in programs outside the district? Nope, nope.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yep. So I understand for point five, grades earned outside the program shall not be counted in calculation of rank, class, and/or GPA. We're adding in the GPA. Why aren't we using that same language but the opposite when we talk about ECA? The last sentence of section B just states quality points are assigned to credit earned for successful participation. It seemed a little cryptic to me. I actually had to reach out to an ECA parent to understand that it's actually both. ECA does get credit, and it is included in class rank and GPA. Could we just make that consistent?
I can look into that absolutely. I can report out at Monday's instructional meeting so that I can have an answer to your question.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. So we're moving on from twelve point two. Twelve point three, presentation of additional information regarding the Seal of Biliteracy.
So at our last instructional meeting, Ms. Moore reported out on this item, and there were some lingering questions by the board. Just to refresh your memory, the Seal of Biliteracy is an award given by the school and the district in recognition of students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. And this is currently an initiative by the Connecticut State Board of Education, and there are school districts piloting it. So in terms of the languages that are available, the apple, which you have in your packet that I passed out this evening, would be for Arabic, Chinese, French, German, Hindi, Italian, Japanese, Korean, Portuguese, Russian, Spanish, Thai, and ESL. The Alira would be for Latin. For American Sign Language, there is a proficiency interview. And then for low-incidence languages, home language that students wish to test for that aren't offered through the tests described, they would be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. So at this time, Mrs. Moore has reached out to ACES, the ACES consultant Maggie Lopez Stevens, to talk about a collaborative with area districts. In addition, they're also looking into the ELTA testing so that there are common, consistent assessments that students could go to to gain the Seal of Biliteracy. So that was the first question. And hopefully that answers that. The second was, could we as a district impose our own ELA graduation requirement? At this time, through the pilot, the Connecticut State Department of Education determined that just successful completion of the ELA course was appropriate, successful passing, without any indication with what score, just passing. So at this time, that's what would be in place. But as the pilot districts are providing feedback, they're also taking that into consideration. And the district may be able to look more in the future about having their own specific designation for the ELA course in terms of a passing grade. But at this time, the state just said a passing grade. So those were just the two items that she wanted me to make sure were clear in your minds. The packet also included a sample letter that would go out, kind of explaining it to this year's seniors who would pilot it in the spring. And then in the fall, it would be open to both juniors and seniors so that it would appear, if they pass successfully, on the transcript. So that's the decision that you all can decide this evening.
Tammy?
How many languages will this letter go out in?
Well, I have the ability very quickly to turn around Spanish. And then others, we would have to use Language Line or our other context locally to see what we can do. Because we don't use Google Translate.
Right.
But we can offer, through some of the services that we have, to translate it into some of our more, to whatever languages we need to. You know, we're limited in some cases, even with language services, to certain particular languages. But when you look through our district in general, eighty to eighty-five percent of it is Spanish first. And then the other languages are far less in terms of what is needed.
I was just wondering, just because it's biliteracy for the student, doesn't mean that that's the case at home.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Yeah. So just to be clear, is the biliteracy certificate or is that really given at graduation? Associated to your diploma?
Correct.
Because I'm confused when I see in order to receive the seal, be in tenth grade or higher. So why would we say that?
Go ahead.
It's similar to the Global Competency Certificate and Seal that we are piloting also as a district.
Right.
That they offer at that age and at that level, and then it would go on your transcript. And then we would be reminded of that for graduation. It would be a seal that would be affixed at graduation.
Okay, so.
If you wanted to apply for colleges.
Okay, so actually, somebody could earn it as early as sophomore year, but we wouldn't necessarily recognize it formally until the diploma.
Exactly.
But they would be able to utilize that as they're applying.
Exactly. And that would be the same thing for the Global Competency.
Right.
Seal. That would be the exact same thing, that they could earn it earlier, depending on when they acquire the appropriate.
Sure.
Credentials. But then they would have access to use it, but they wouldn't get designation until graduation.
Ah, thank you.
Mr. Vado?
But that seal would also be placed on the transcripts?
There would be designation on the transcript.
Designation.
Correct.
Karen?
I'm pleased to note that those students that are proficient in American Sign Language can also earn that designation. That's very important.
Ms. Moore has stated that, you know, as the districts are going through this for the first time, the director is very appreciative of the feedback and moving forward to make any adjustments as needed as time goes on as well.
Great. Maddie?
I'd just like to ask that after the pilot, if you could come back with the information you know, because the ELA being such a low mark to overcome, I'd like to be able to get that feedback in the future.
Sure, I'll continue to keep the board informed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another quick question. So what would be the latest timeframe-wise, a student can take one of these exams and still have it appear on their transcript or diploma? Like, are we looking at May of senior year?
Well, right now, we're doing May of senior year. And we would make that deadline for graduation. In the fall, because we want students to be able to have it on their transcript as they're applying for college, we are looking for September, early October so that if there is a need to maybe reassess, there still leaves time before college applications go out.
Mm-hmm. I'm just curious if there's some stragglers that we could pick up with AP exams in May, get it put on their senior AP exam, you know, using the AP exam.
Once the board determines whether we can move forward, Kim, Ms. Moore, will work with Mr. Corso and Ms. Dethy to arrange the logistics necessary in order to get this going.
Thank you. Mr. Vado?
Yeah, I just thought of this. I mean, I had thought about it in the past, but you bring it, it comes to mind now when you mentioned the list of languages that you did and with Mrs. Levack's question. I really think it's time for us to investigate sign language as a language in the high school. There are so many children, you'd be surprised, that are interested in that. And the teaching of the deaf has become more prevalent now. You see that when people give speeches all the time now, there's that person on the side. I mean, there really is, there are two forms. There's signed exact English and American Sign. American Sign is probably more used, is used for the most part. But I think it's something we should start investigating, even if we had to start at like on a club level first, just to see if there's an interest, and then maybe work ourselves up to a point where we offer it as a subject, just to see if there is an interest among kids. You'd be surprised. It's the fourth language, fourth largest language used in the world. Thank you.
I think that's important also, considering the state is coming down. And I think it's the current seventh-grade class that will be expected to have two years of a world language. It's not quite approved yet, but it's in the works. Two years of world language for graduation. And if we can get, and I think sign language is an approved potential language. So especially kids with language processing disorders or things like that, sign language might be a really good option for them.
Yeah, that credit recommendation has been, now this is probably, I want to say during my tenure as superintendent, now going on fifteen years in two different districts, has been requested each time. Because I'm the, as many of you know, I'm the head of the International Education Committee for superintendents in the state. And so we've been asking for this. Their challenge with it, and I totally support it, one hundred percent, because obviously, part of that committee. The challenge that we have is that it often puts a financial burden on some school districts that can't afford to offer language for all students. We're very fortunate because, Wallingford, we do start with a language at third grade, at least in Spanish, in the middle school. As you all know, we have our three years that students, most students are entering high school in Spanish two or French two, if not higher. And they're able to transport a credit from middle school to high school. But I agree with what Ms. Corso and both, both what Ms. Corso and Mr. Vado said, that we do need to look at the American Sign Language. Just on a side note, I was with my goddaughter this weekend and that she wants to learn three languages, and one of them is that. And she's all ready, and watch out, because that's definitely something she did, she knew. It's the fourth largest language in the world. And I was like, okay, I'm not going to argue with you. But I think we do need to look at it. And I love the idea of starting it as a club. We've had students over the years who have approached that. So thank you.
Any other discussion? So it looks like you need an approval for some pilot testing.
I do.
Can you just review the cost of pilot testing? Or does the cost fall on the student?
It falls on the student. And if there's a financial need for assistance, the building will help the student and the family.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So I make a motion to approve some pilot testing for the Seal of Biliteracy.
I second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Hey, thank you so much. I just want to take a second and acknowledge our retirees. And for people that might be watching us, I just think it's really is extraordinary to think that we accepted twelve individuals to retire that total three hundred and thirty-six years of service, which is really astounding to think about that, that twelve people got to that level. So what a dedicated group of individuals that have absolutely committed themselves to education, but more importantly, to our district. So I wish them all good luck and good health in their retirement, and thank you for your service. Okay, so now we'll go back to our agenda and stick to our regular agenda as originally outlined, starting with item seven, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda? Item seven point one through seven point fourteen.
Show move.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify?
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Just with the corrections that we submitted, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a first and, no problem. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Item eight, items removed from the consent agenda. There were none, so we'll move right along. Correspondence? Mr. Vado?
Yeah, we are acknowledging a gift of $1,000 a grant for books from Walmart to Moses White Beach School. We thank Walmart for that. And we also have an expression, a thank you for an expression of sympathy on the part of the board from the Pereira family. Did I say that correctly?
Thank you very much. Okay, item ten, committee reports. We'll start with ACES. Mrs. Levack?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The ACES Governing Board met on March 8th, 2018. The minutes of the February 8th, 2018 meeting were approved. There were two guest presenters at the meeting. Ms. Patrice McCarthy, Deputy Director and General Counsel for CAE, provided a legislative update. And Mr. Thomas Hennig, Public Education Officer for the Freedom of Information Commission, reviewed FOI provisions. Please note the enclosures in your packet under item ten point one. The first enclosure is entitled Highlights of the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, and the second enclosure is entitled Notice of Meetings. Ms. McCarthy inquired as to what members of school districts were planning to do for the anticipated student activities responses to the recent events in Florida. Governing Board members shared information regarding planned activities in their districts. Ms. McCarthy indicated that at the Educational Committee hearing, funding issues were the greatest concern. Boards of education are interested in stability and predictability of funding. A task force was convened to address professional development mandates, and the legislature listened, and there is more flexibility now regarding PD. It appears that due to the recent financial concerns that the state legislators are more receptive to revisiting mandates. The following 2018, 2019 proposed budgets were reviewed and discussed. Whitney High School East West, Mill Road, Whitney High School East West, Mill Road, Village School, Village EIBI, Sales Program Intensive, Whitney High School North, Transportation, Pupil Services, Extensive Therapy Services, Behavioral Services, Assistive Technology, Technology Services, Governing Board, Office of the Executive Director, Human Resources, Information and Marketing Services, Assistant Executive Director for Programs and Curriculum, and Assistant Director of Finance and Operations, and the ACES Institute. Under Old Business, the following policies were approved as a second read. School or agency fundraisers, including online campaigns, security check, fingerprinting, Non-Discrimination Act concerning discriminatory practices against veterans in accordance with PA 17127. Tax-sheltered annuities, homeless students, parent and family engagement policy for Title I students. The governing board approved the Human Resources Report, the Early Head Start Report, and the filing of the fiscal report subject to audit. A curriculum and instruction update was presented by Mr. William Rice, Assistant Executive Director. He met with legislators to discuss magnet school grant opportunities. The next ACES governing board meeting is scheduled for April 20th, April 12, 2018. There are 96 students attending ACES programs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I must say that it was a very interesting handout that Mr. Hennig provided to the governing board that was included in your packet. And it kind of gives you an overview of FOI. So it's a handy resource.
Thank you for that. Okay, item 10.2, Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee, Mrs. Rochio.
So I'll report out.
That's you, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
I apologize.
Last month, the meeting primarily was a budget presentation where they reviewed each line item. There will be a small increase in student tuition that has been communicated to the business office so that we can plan accordingly. This month's meeting is Wednesday.
Okay, great. Any comments, questions? Okay. Item 10.3, School to Career Representative Business Think Tank.
Yes, Ms. Castelli joined us for her first meeting at the Business Think Tank. So we thank her very much for coming. It was a meeting at which we discussed a couple of key items, one of which I will hold off and discuss in my administrative report, because Ms. McKay could share some updates on that topic. But the focus of our meeting was dealing with the online platform Naviance and how we want to add, as I've shared to the board, with board members before, that we want to add a specialized tab for Wallingford Public Students about job opportunities. So we really can delve into the career experiences for students after high school. So we came up with, with the assistance and hard work of Rob Kovey, our Career Technical Education Coordinator, a draft template for businesses in local community to complete. We're getting feedback from local businesses. We just got some great feedback today from a couple of large manufacturers in town. And so we're revising that document, and that's going to be a separate link. And what it's going to basically be is where businesses are going to be able to put a little bit about their business, a little profile, a link to their website, maybe link to video, whatever it may be, that's going to be for them to do. And then it's going to have on, from the school district, what are the potential career opportunities in that business, working with them? What are the courses that you might want to consider taking in order to be able to get an entry-level job potentially after high school or upon completion of college? And then what are the attributes that the business want for students? So once that's finalized, we'll share that with all board members, and we look to have that open and ready to go. If not by the end of the school year, definitely by the fall. But there was great conversation on that topic, a lot of participation. We're working with EDC, Tim Ryan is very involved, he provided feedback. We're very excited about this. This is kind of a totally different direction than most schools are going with Naviance. Naviance doesn't have this built into their system. So we're proud that we're able to move forward in this direction.
Great. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Kat.
Okay. Having attended it for the first time, I was bowled over, actually. I was so impressed with the participants in the room and the energy level in that room. It was amazing, it really was. I'm very excited to be on this team now. Thank you.
Okay, item 10.4, PTAC update.
So at this past meeting, we had a presentation provided by Justin Marciano in regards to distracted driving. Kramer International, a company that comes in, presented to the junior class using a simulator to, for students to drive. And, you know, they might be getting a text from a friend or from someone else. So they had to actually go through the steps of what it would be like. The presentation was free. It's funded by the Department of Transportation. And Justin felt that it had great things to say, that the students were very engaged, very respectful of what the message of the presentation was. They're coming back next year as well, and he will be communicating with Lyman Hall's administration so that both schools can have that opportunity. Dr. Menzo reviewed the feedback from the community meeting in regards to school safety in addition to sharing the list of safety items that are being requested that was developed in conjunction with the Safety Committee staff and community. A quick budget update was provided as well. And the planning has started for the next round of Parent Choice Awards. So there was ample discussion about what that will look like and how to continue that on, because everyone recognizes what a special event it is.
Any questions or comments? Okay. 10.5, Plan of Conservation Development. Normally, Mr. Reynolds attends those meetings. Obviously, he's not available this evening, so I'm going to assume there, we don't have an update report for that. 10.6, Food Service Strategic Plan Committee, Mr. Menschur.
The group will be getting together this Wednesday. And some of the things we're currently working on are the logistics to a breakfast program here in the district. We're also putting together some final touches on the district survey that I put together and rolling out a presentation for everyone. And we continue to, or we continuing developing programs so that we can increase student participation in all of our schools.
Great. Any questions or comments? Yeah.
I would just like to comment, if I may. Today, and he didn't know I was eavesdropping. But I don't know if you know, but Mr. Menschur's office now is located at Central Office and literally a stone's throw from my office. And I have to say that, not even a stone's throw, probably, I don't even know what you'd say, it's very close. But I was so impressed by a conversation he was having with one of his cafeteria managers and his respect for them and this person's work. They're going to be highlighting a new menu item at Moran. And they were talking about how they were going to make it work. He had talked with the provider of the resource and how they're going to try to make something special for the kids. And, but really just so thoughtful. And I just want to make recognition of that in the sense that there was such a concern to make sure that everybody, all the staff felt comfortable with this, that they weren't coming into their kitchen and taking over, that they were working together as a team, and it was going to be a positive opportunity, and that there was really, again, a sincerity in the conversation about making certain that staff was appreciated. And that most importantly, the new alternatives, which are also being tested, I think, at Sheehan, are really going to hopefully meet a greater portion of our population's needs in our cafeteria as a choice and an idea. So I just wanted to share that, because I'm kind of uniquely situated now. I have a lot of different departments around me. Of course, I have Keri, I also have Laura in Special Ed. And I have to say, it's nice being so close to hear the conversations. And I do have to say, while I mentioned Laura, a similar conversation this afternoon. Just hearing conversation, just positive interaction with either staff or families. And again, not knowing that I'm there. I mean, half the time, you guys know I'm not there because I'm out in the buildings. And it just, it really does reaffirm the fact that, you know, you all are very caring. And I just wanted, again, make special mention, because I know that we're always looking to try to raise the bottom line, we're always looking at the quality of food, and sometimes it doesn't get noticed, and so I just wanted to share that.
Very nice. I'm going to put together 10.7 and 10.8, which are the stage lighting renovation updates and the four-school window replacement project for Mr. Deptula. How you doing?
Good evening. The bids came in for the stage project, and they look favorable. We have several vendors to choose from. We hope to qualify a vendor, you know, for that, multiple vendors for that project this week. We did award the window project last week to the two low bidders. They were qualified, so that project is now moving forward.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay, great. Okay. Item 11, Old Business, I do not believe we have any. Item 12, we already covered, Instructional Committee. 13, Operations Committee, Mrs. Levak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Operations Committee meeting took place on March 12, 2018. A presentation to the board was made by Ms. Deborah Tagliatella, the Youth Committee Chairperson of the Wallingford Garden Club. The Wallingford Garden Club unanimously approved the funding of a project for an outdoor classroom at Pond Hill School. Mrs. Belizzi, the Pond Hill principal, was contacted regarding this project and fully supports this endeavor. As part of the project, students at Pond Hill will collaborate with Mr. Chris Sagnella and his pioneer students of the Hampton Middle School. A world language field trip to Spain scheduled to take place from April 11, 2019 through April 19, 2019 for Lyman Hall High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School students was discussed. Questions about chaperone ratios and itinerary ensued. The consensus of the committee was to send this request for approval to the next regular board meeting for action. Action was taken on this item this evening under the consent agenda. The meeting minutes for January 29, 31, and February 12 meetings of the Board of Education Financial Reports and Cafeteria Financial Reports for February 2018 were reviewed in committee and accepted under the consent agenda this evening. The cafeteria showed a profit of $11,922.34. Mr. Menschur indicated that the managers are carefully monitoring inventory usage and ordering only the amounts of food and milk needed. This careful monitoring has resulted in a decrease in our food and milk expenses. Additionally, Mr. Menschur is working with vendors to procure quality items at the best prices. There were a number of board members at the Operations Committee meeting concerned about the amount of food that our students are not eating, especially fruit. Mr. Menschur indicated that some students prefer cut-up fruit rather than whole fruit. Therefore, he is ordering more cut-up fruit to address this concern. Mr. Barone indicated that changes in the benefits, transportation, salaries, Medicare, Social Security, utilities, and plant maintenance accounts have occurred. These changes include the recalculation of insurance benefits, the decrease of transportation costs due to a student requiring specialized transportation services moving out of district, and changes in personnel costs through attrition and/or unpaid family leaves. Mr. Barone reported that the overall projected surplus for the budget at this time is $547,884.
Okay. Very good. Any comments, questions? Okay. Item 14, New Business, I do not believe we have any new business. 15, Administration Report, Dr. Menzo.
Yes, thank you very much. Just so you know, and I wanted the board to be aware of this, and I know parents in the community are aware of this. I sent out the email, as I said I would today, to all families regarding the safety meeting that we had last week, as well as our proposal that will be sent to the mayor and the town council. There's an added page to the budget book, that you all get a copy of the book that we sent to the town council, that'll go out either tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning. And that's in preparation of our meetings that we have coming up with the budget. The first meeting is on April 9, Monday, April 9. It's the town meeting. So that's when we sit and face the audience and taxpayers. Citizens could come up and ask questions. That starts at 6 o'clock in this room. On the 26th of April, at 6:30, that's when we face the opposite direction and we answer questions from the town council. So again, there's public comment at both meetings. I would encourage people to come, at least listen, offer your feedback. If you have feedback prior to that, please feel free to reach out to me. I received some very thoughtful, kind, respectful emails this afternoon, thanking us for acting so quickly and promptly on the data that was provided or collected from parents, students, and families, especially at the forum here. They were really pleased at the timeliness of that, and we committed to that. So that was, that's what we did. I do want to say just also a huge debt of gratitude to Mark Deptula, Dominic Barone, and Karen Veugh for their work in helping finalize all the numbers and making sure that we did what we said we were going to do with board members last week, reach out to administrators, clarify what they wanted. That's why you saw a little adjustment in some of the panic button items. Some wanted something a little differently than others. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. We felt the camera number was still good, so that's why you didn't see an adjustment on that, because the quantity was still requested to the level that we thought. But again, I do want to thank those three individuals for their hard work and commitment to that task, because it certainly couldn't be done by one. So thank you for that. As a follow-up also, as was mentioned by Sam from Lyman Hall, we had a meeting last month, on February 28, with some of our students regarding planning next steps. But today, we actually met again with students. We brought them to Central Office, so they were the same, most of the same students were able to come back. Some because of class schedules couldn't, but we invited them. We served them pizza for lunch, and they were able to brainstorm next steps. And it really is focusing around the mental health issue. So they really want to develop some peers, helping peers programming. They did a great activity. We have a lot of information to take to next step. They also would like to have a Student Voice Committee, an opportunity for them to meet regularly with the high school principals as student groups across town. So bringing both high school student bodies representative with the high school principals to have a conversation about how they can work proactively together to make our schools safer places. Again, reaffirming that our students in our district are extremely passionate, extremely caring, and extremely mature. And so I'm proud to have been part of that. I was there for just a very short portion today, because unfortunately, I had some other meetings that came in. But again, I know that it was well-led by Mr. Loomis. Mr. Corso was there from Lyman Hall, Mr. Dirksen from Sheehan, and Mr. Ives from Sheehan. So I do want to thank all of them for their support, because it was a really great event. Couple other things. Recently, we did a Bye Bye Birdie at Sheehan High School. I know Sister Act is coming up at Lyman Hall in May. Bye Bye Birdie, again, phenomenal event. The performances were just incredible on the part of our students. And to see them grow, you know, one of the students, there was a set of twins that were in the show at Sheehan. And to see them just when they were little, one of the young ladies was, I think it was my first year here, she was in the elementary production of Annie, and she played Annie. And now to see her as one of the leads in Bye Bye Birdie as a sophomore is quite amazing, the transformation. So that was pretty interesting to see that and powerful. We did have several sporting teams that came to the playoffs. We had, most notably, beyond the boys that we represent, that we recognize tonight, we had our hockey teams at both Lyman Hall and Sheehan. Sheehan's team, as many of you know, will recognize them at an upcoming board meeting, because it was the first time they won their conference. So we're very proud of them, and I'm excited. I was invited to their banquet on Thursday evening. So I look forward to attending that and congratulating the boys that evening. We also have later this month, the Distinguished Alumni Awards Dinner that's sponsored by the Wallingford Education Foundation, excuse me, later in April. I'm already ahead to the next month, we flipped the calendar, sorry. But if you're interested in attending, please let us know. We can get you an invitation, and we can make certain that you're able to attend and get a table. It's a great event. Again, all the funds go back to the school district through grants for either professional development for our teachers or actual resources for classrooms. So we really do encourage people to participate in that event. And last but not least, and Ms. McKay was part of a meeting we had last Monday, where we brought back together a steering committee from a meeting that we had on February 1 regarding having Wallingford take on a designation of being a STEM town. And what we would like to do, and what we were able to do at our steering committee meeting, is identify some of our next steps. And our next step is that we would like to, and we're identifying weeks. But it looks like we're tentatively scheduling the first, second week, and third week of May to launch Wallingford, the concept of Wallingford Public Schools, and Wallingford, the town of Wallingford, not just the schools, but the town of Wallingford as a STEM town. And what's that, what that means is that we want to work with all of our different participants, business, government, our community resources, be it Families, Youth and Social Services, YMCA, Park and Rec, SCOW, Town Library, as well as the school district, as well as families and students, to really get everyone engaged in what is STEM and what does that mean. So the first week, the first week of May, we're tentatively looking to highlight science and technology in our schools, as well as in our community. What does that look like in businesses in Wallingford? Who, what do they make? What does that mean for science and technology? Then the next week, we want to look at engineering and mathematics. What does that look like in our school? What does that look like in our community? And then the third week, pulling together the three, the four letters and explaining how does that look like? What does that look like as a STEM field? What are the needs? We have over 500,000 open jobs just in the United States alone in STEM fields. And in just in Connecticut, there's about 26,000 jobs that are open just in STEM fields. Some of these jobs require years of college. Some of them are open right after high school for students. So we want to make that aware, everyone aware of those opportunities. And the mayor has agreed that he would issue a proclamation that Wallingford is a STEM town. And really, we want to stand committed to that. We believe that that will impact how we look at our curriculum. It'll impact how we look at our facility study that we do this, hopefully, that we'll engage upon starting this summer, early fall. But again, it's a real tribute to everybody working together. And there was, talk about energy in a room.
Yeah. Good cross-reference of people, too, from all over our community, really.
So we had the Town Library present, the mayor present. We had school district staff and administration present. We had business represented.
YMCA.
YMCA, SCOW. So it was, and everybody talked. Everybody's voice was heard. We had Middlesex Community College present. We also had Quinnipiac University present. So it was just such a, there was a lot of energy in that room. And I think that that was fantastic, because it's going to take a lot of, a lot of hard work, because there's such, in some instances, not all families, but there's a stigma attached to being science smart or math smart. And we sometimes let people get away with saying, oh, I'm not good at math. Well, why aren't you good at math? Are you really not good, or is it just that you're, it's okay to get away with saying that you're not good at math? And one person made a comment at the meeting, I don't know who it was, it's easy for you to say you're not good at math, but you would never publicly admit that you can't read.
Right.
So it's like, we have to, we have to think about that, and we have to say, okay, what does that mean? You know? So we'll keep you posted. We'll definitely make you aware of all the events throughout the community. And we're just really excited about increasing our awareness for our families and our students. So I know I just said a lot, but I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. McKay?
No, you summed it up perfectly. I mean, I just think the commitment of the community in large... I mean, I just think the commitment of the community in large is there, and that was what made it such an exciting meeting, really, is everybody, all these different facets were represented and are committed towards this notion of making us a STEM town, and that was exciting, I thought. It wasn't like, well, I'm not sure, maybe, or, you know, it was, everybody's in 100%, and I think that's what's exciting about it. It's a great opportunity for our town, really. Even we had EDC there. I mean, so you see, you can come at it from all different aspects, and it really benefits the community at every, no matter what angle you look at it, it's a benefit if we can say and commit to being a STEM community, knowing what are the types of businesses that are physically located in our town and how we can help fill those positions that are open. So it's just really a win-win all the way around, so. And thank you for pulling that all together, too, actually, Dr. Menzo, because it actually came with your office. So that's a good thing. So I want to make sure you're all set. So I want to make just our announcements, and I've just been asked the question about our operations. We will not have an operations committee meeting for April, and the reason why is because it would be the same night as April 9, which is our town council public budget meeting. So what we'll do is kind of just delay, if you will, our operations and just, we'll get an update at our, at this meeting, at our televised meeting for April about operations. So that's, that was a conflict. So as Dr. Menzo mentioned, April 2nd, Monday, April 2nd is, first off, our instruction committee meeting, which is at our Board of Ed Conference Room at 6:30 at South Turnpike Road. Monday, April 9 is, we'll be here at, representing Board of Education for the Town Council, public budget meeting, which starts at 6:00 PM. And Thursday, April 26 will be when we're facing the town council, again, answering their questions about our budget, and that also will be, that will be at 6:30. So 6 o'clock for the first one, 6:30 for the second one, a little bit of a tweak there. And then, of course, our televised meeting is April 23 here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30. And with that, this meeting's adjourned. Have a nice evening, everybody.